Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, April 6th, City of New Franklin County meeting. We have one, two, three, five first readings, no seconds and no thirds. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We will open the finance committee meeting at 6:00. All members are present, we start with Resolution 22 R18. A resolution accepting a proposal from BRICS Incorporated for the purchase of the BRICS fire station alerting system and declaring an emergency. The idea is that our current alerting system is antiquated and insufficient. And this fire station alerting system, alerting system will be at a price of $52,000 spread out over five years is the proposal. And we have with us the Honorable Chief Leslie from Fire Department. What would you like to share with us on this?
You can.
Yeah, come on.
I was all prepared to come up to the podium. So this, this alarm system, first off, I have to say, we have some of the best dispatchers that we could, that in the county for dispatching. Unfortunately, dispatchers nowadays are forced to do more and more work than they've ever had to do. What, what has always been our alerting system before has always been what I call human-driven, which means it actually takes actions by the dispatchers to dispatch out the units. So in other words, they take the call, they find it's a fire call, they have to press a certain button, that sets off a certain series of tones, they have to wait for those tones to go through, then they have to go ahead and give the verbal on what's, what the type of call, what the nature of the call is and that. Then they have to go ahead and switch radio channels because that's put out over one channel, they're switching back and forth, it can be quite a lot task-wise for the dispatchers. What this system does is, this system works in the background, it's totally automated. So what it does is when the call comes in, it takes that call and it automatically knows what, from the address that comes up with the 911, knows where the address is, takes that call, automatically starts toning out that station. So you get what's called a pre-alert, knowing fully well that there's a call coming in. So one of the examples that I can use is, you have a smart TV. This system integrates to that smart TV. The guys are watching television, that whatever program they're watching cuts out, the screen comes up with the dispatch screen, and it automatically tells them that they have a med call coming in at this address. So it speeds up that response time in that, that act. And this all happens behind the scenes, this all integrates into the CAD system that we currently have, the Tyler New World CAD system over at Green. And so the dispatchers don't have to do anything. The next thing that happens is as the dispatcher types in what the call type is and starts typing into the CAD, which they have to do anyways, in addition to pressing the button, waiting, talking, all the things they need to do. What this does is this takes the text that they're typing in, converts it to speech, and automatically sends that out over that radio channel. So it just, it, it streamlines the whole system. And it's, this, this is basically the brains of that system. So what they do is, it then, that just frees up the dispatchers to stay on the line with the person, to give, all of our dispatchers are EMD certified, so they're giving, if it's a medical call, they're giving medical advice. It, it frees them up to stay with that person on the phone versus having to, alright, I'm gonna put you on hold for just a minute, and then toning out the guys and talking to the guys on the radio and things like that. So it, it streamlines that for the dispatchers. Plus, it improves our response time because the guys are getting that pre-notification way ahead of time. Now, once they get the pre-notification, they go to the, to the squad, this integrates into the iPads we already use for our patient care reports. It brings up everything for that call. As that dispatcher's, it's real-time updating. So as that dispatcher's typing in, those guys can be looking at all the dispatch notes, all, everything that comes up with it. So that's a, that's a very good thing. And that doesn't cost any more, that's part of the system. We can also put that on phones, so all of the members of the department can have that on their phones. We have a similar system right now, a similar software package that we use for that, that costs us roughly $500 a year, that we wouldn't have to pay, that expires in June, so we wouldn't have to pay that with this system. The other thing it does is that it, by automating things, it reduces the chances of the potential for human error. So you get a call to, let's say, the call's on Homeland, and the dispatcher doesn't get it right, and they hear Howland, and, but it gives you exactly where the 911 call originated from and what the address is. So it kind of alleviates any kind of mistakes that way. The other benefit to it is it has a built-in system. The University of Indiana, in cooperation with FEMA, did a study and found that the instantaneous, and Mr. Harkett, you can remember these days, of the instantaneous that alarm going off and getting, getting woken up or shocked by that alarm, definitely creates cardiac stress for firefighters. So what they've come up with and developed is, it's what they call a ramped system. So it starts out, the tones start out low and gradually build. They find that that reduces firefighter cardiac stress, that doesn't create an issue with the heart rate going from resting to, to high. So it helps prevent that, that cardiac stress. And, and this system does include that. This is for both stations, it's over the, the cost, it is not, not cheap, I will say that, but I think the benefit of it is, over the course of time and taking advantage of this technology, now is a good thing to do. I mean, the, the, we're still pushing buttons, the dispatchers are still pushing button, like, buttons to activate an action by the fire department, the same way they did in 1976. So we're starting, technology has caught up to the point where I think it's a good thing. I think it, it really will help out dispatch and it will improve our response times.
Okay, so this system has, Green and Lake More has already committed.
Yes.
Putting this system in.
Yes.
And Coventry is, is still looking at it.
Coventry's looking at it right now. Green has committed, Lake More has committed. Right now, currently Summit County has, using this system currently, is Fairlon, that's where we went and actually saw the system work. Fairlon, Mogador, Pogge Falls, Springfield Township, Talmage and Barben are all using the BRICS system right now. On the books right now, to be installed this year are Green, Lake More, Norton and Complea are adding the BRICS system.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you came in to, to talk with us about it. One of the things, reading through the information here, it talked about the dispatchers have to push a button. And I'm reading, I'm thinking, oh, they have to push a button, wow, let's take that away from them. But as you explain it, it's, it's not just pushing a button, it's then they have to, they have to, what got me is when you said, they have to put the call on hold, so they can talk to the fire station or something like that. And this information is going to them immediately, so they're all, they're in the process of on their way as the information's coming in instead of waiting for the information.
Yeah, and, and actually with Green and Lake More going to this, and hopefully Coventry, but at least with Green and Lake More going to this by the end of the year, if we go to it, then of the five departments that the South Summit Dispatch handles, four of the five will be, hopefully all five will be on the system by, which really makes it nice at those busy times when we're all out and we're all busy. The other part of that too is, because we're working so closely together, if that call comes in and based off of, it's all CAD-driven, CAD-driven, which is the computer-aided dispatch, so based off of what that call is, if it's a fire call, the BRICS will automatically send that out to all the departments that are gonna go to that call. Or another example is a water call. If we have a drowning call at the state park, the BRICS will send that out to us, Coventry, Green, all of South Summit Water Rescue at the same time. And it's done without, without necessarily any actions by the dispatcher. So that'll increase our, our, speed up our response time to not only us, but to our neighbor in Bricks.
Okay. And in here with the cost at 52,000, like I mentioned, it's been proposed to spread it out over five years, is that your plan?
Yes, yes, they're offering to do it interest-free over five years.
Okay. And, and this goes without saying, your, your budget is your budget, is your money. The fire department's run through the fire levy, that's, that's all their money, so obviously you're comfortable with this price.
The, the, the plan with this is, yes, we would use capital improvement money every year to, to, to pay the cost. And then once the, once it's paid for at the end of the five years, we own it. There's a, we can pay a, a maintenance agreement fee of $5,000 a year for it, and that, basically they'll cover everything on the system, so if something breaks or they'll, they'll maintain that system for the life of the system.
And, and provide upgrades throughout?
Yes, that includes, yes. So they'll upgrade it for the next five years, that's automatically included, and then after the five years, if we purchase the, the, the maintenance agree, extended warranty, yes, very good way to put it. If we purchase that extended warranty, then yes, that'll cover upgrades to software, hardware, anything like that.
Okay, alright. Members counsel?
I have a quick question. The 5,000, that doesn't start day one, we're, we're covered for the five years, the 5,000 would be just the extended warranty?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, that would start year six.
Yeah, and then, how does it know if it's fire, police, drowning, does it, does it use voice recognition to?
It, it will not know, it will tell the, it will give you a pre-alert that you have a call coming in. Then depending on what the dispatcher drops into the CAD as the nature of the call, is how it'll work, is, is then how.
There's still a little piece of human in there.
There's still, yeah, we're still not quite totally away from that.
Good, because if somebody says, I need water, my house is on fire, my husband had heart attacks.
Do you still understand, yeah, yeah.
Something, I, I've been through, you've been through those emergencies, you don't necessarily speak clearly.
And if you've ever, you know, had an occasion to have a conversation with Siri, you know how that goes, so. Yeah.
I mean, I've had some comments and questions I've sent to Chief, but thanks for getting those Siri questions.
Sure.
This may be a Sue question, do we track our assets with depreciation based on, so, do we track separately for EMS and fire, or do we track those the same?
Um, they, actually they're all, they're all done separately, depending on the item itself.
Should we split this between EMS and fire, since this is an asset, typically we consider a trackable asset, anything over 5,000. Would this be, Sue could show depreciation on two separate, would that be a benefit?
Um, no, in fact, it will be, I mean, because we don't separate out fire and EMS specifically, we separate out, the GAAP separates out the, whether, what department it is, that's where it is, and then the item itself separately, so it will say what that item is, and the life of it, and the, you know, the price, and then do the depreciation for the years out.
Okay. And then the, the quote shows that the price is good until, I think, May 15th?
Uh huh.
So I noticed there's emergency language on there, do we need to have emergency language if we waive the three and let it go for the 30 days, is that something's acceptable?
I do not have a problem if, if, if you, if it goes to a second reading or, yeah, as long as we're in before the, the end of the quote, yes, yeah, we'll be good.
Mr. Cox, what are your thoughts on that?
Uh, I'm comfortable with moving forward on this, but if council would like to take it to a second reading?
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with waiving the three and just removing the emergency language, it still gets you your 30 days at the end, and he's still getting his prior before the expiration date on the reading quote.
Okay, other members, council have comments on that?
I'm not sure what, what we're trying to do, if we do that, if you're saying that we move, remove the emergency, is it making it sound like we're not pushing it, or I'm not sure why we do that?
No, I'm just trying to keep consistent with when we use emergency language. It's not that you can't make a case for this, and typically if you're gonna make a case for this to be emergency language, it'd be something like, let's say, the, the quotes when it expired, gonna miss out on that, that quote. In this case, we're not gonna miss out on a quote if we pass it tonight, and it's not a life or death matter, it's not, I mean, I see it's a nice, it's a want, but it's not something we absolutely have, and that's just my, my thoughts on it.
Listen, I, I agree with that concept because the, I get more feedback from people on the emergency language than anything, I, I'm amazed how many people are like, why is every, why is this an emergency, why is it an emergency? So I, I just think we should use our emergency language when it is an emergency, it really has to happen, and we don't have to, not even.
Okay.
So, I'm good with that.
Alright, and just to clarify too, even if it does pass, if, if you pass it tonight, there's no chance that, we're looking at probably a four to six month before it's installed. So, Green's a little bit ahead of us, they've already, they have their agreement, they're already working on it, and they're still looking probably sometime this summer.
And this is already encumbered in the budget for this year?
Yeah, yes.
Anybody have questions for, for us or Chief on this? Yes, sir.
What is the life expectancy of this?
They say that it'll last 15-plus years with the technology, which.
How much money is this costing?
It's, it's a total of 50,000, 52,000 dollars total for both stations.
Oh, I thought you were asking that.
Yeah.
Mr. Sednick?
Yeah, just a, just a comment to answer the question, because in the proposal, it said that the current system is five years old and it's antiquated, and I was wondering, I was going to ask the question, but you answered it in that it's a, a five-year expenditure, and then there's software upgrades, so we can keep it current, but about five years from now, we're not gonna have to replace it with another 50,000.
And the, the antiquated part of that, in that, in that request, is more so that the, it's antiquated in the fact that even though we've moved descent to, to South Summit Dispatch, it still takes those physical actions of the dispatchers to, to, to put, to put the wheels in motion for the, for us to respond. So, yeah. Now, what we did install at the time we went to South Summit, actually will work in conjunction with this, so it's not like we're, we're scrapping something we just purchased two years ago to, to replace it with this. If they work together, they actually work side by side.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll look at, asking to waive the three readings on this, but we'd like to amend section three, so that it would read, council declares this, the first three words, we have section three.
Is it, what, the section, oh, section three?
Section three.
Okay.
Council declares this, and then scratch everything until the bottom where it says shall.
Or it shall?
Yeah, we'll start at shall.
Okay.
So it will say, council declares this shall take effect and be enforced at the earliest time allowed by law. Okay?
I was, I'm just gonna make a point, I'm just looking at some of my legislation that this year, well, ready, we've passed on first reads that said emergency, and nothing was brought up, and nothing was under us restraint. We did a lawn care on March 2nd, passed it seven to zero, we waived it, there was nothing in the contract that said it had to be done by a certain time. We also have on February 16th, we passed and waived a declaration of emergency with the Barbenton Law Department, there was nothing that had to be done in a certain amount of time on that. On this one, Chris.
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine, I'm sure you will. Just saying, and then we have another one that we passed for the Republic Services, and I'm not sure we were on a deadline on that one, but we waived and passed that one. And for the voluntary life for, we passed and waived that on the first reading, there was nothing. That would, that would have.
So all four of those, so the lawn care was an existing contract?
Okay.
That the mayor had expressed a concern about the use of services, we didn't use those before you were.
Okay, so if we can get back to the finance committee meeting.
I just wanted to bring it up, that's what we did.
So we will, we will ask to waive the three readings on Resolution 22 R18 as amended, when we get to that part. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming in, and thank you for coming up to the podium.
It's nice that everybody can hear you.
Our next resolution would be Resolution 22 R19, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase two police cruisers and declaring this to be an emergency. And this is a replacement for a police vehicle pulled in an accident, and then a second cruiser at a regular rotation of vehicles. We are going back to the Ford Explorer and working through Montrose Ford, I believe, correct? And the total, oh yeah, the Montrose Ford, total of 66,333 dollars for both of these vehicles. Chief Beckett, will you take the witness stand, please? So in 2017, our, our normal program for purchasing police vehicles is what it has been in the past, is we purchase two, one year, the second year, we purchased one, the next year, we purchased two, purchased one, blah, blah, blah. In 2017, we purchased two, 2018, we did not purchase, 2019, we purchased two, 2020, and 2021, we purchased two. So we're here in 2022, looking to purchase one and replace one.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, the, the one we're replacing is, is the DARE Jeep Wrangler, it was still in an accident last spring, that was a seized vehicle from a drunk arrest. So that's one of the vehicles we're replacing now, that's gonna be used by our school resource officer as a DARE vehicle, and it'll use as patrol officer, patrol vehicle in the summertime when it's not in schools.
Is that the one that's gonna be black?
Yeah, it's gonna be black. Officer Turbovich is working with the schools to kind of design it, the graphics could be different on that, but it'll still be a full functional place called license sirens and a radio.
Okay, and the second one will be likely to go along with the rest of it.
Correct.
Okay. So this price appears not to include all the lights and stuff, whereas when we got it from Tulloway, yeah, those prices did.
That's correct, yeah, the upping is gonna cost you between eight and 12,000 dollars. The first one we got was 12,000. A company we've used in the past is Halls, and they quoted us just over 9,000, I mean 9,300. We're gonna get enough more quotes, we're gonna talk to a few more people, but it's gonna be around that range to get this updated with lights and sirens and mounts and cages.
Okay, so this still comes in cheaper than what we paid last year.
It's still gonna be a few thousand cheaper.
Yeah, but last year, the one we replaced in September for one that was in an accident, was 46,997, that included all the, all the lights and, and fun stuff, but these vehicles are 33,166, so if we spent 10,000 dollars to put all that stuff in, we're still at 43,000 versus almost 47,000. Alright, so, okay. What else you got?
Topos are nice, but we don't, we don't need a whole fleet of topos. I mean, I think the four that we have are great, that they hold a lot of stuff, and you know, there's, mostly a supervisory vehicle that holds the shields and some of the other stuff that we carry, like, none of your cruiser has that, so it's nice to get back to the explorers.
Okay.
Because that topos makes sense.
And this is a stated pricing?
Correct.
Okay, council, comments, questions?
Are these vehicles in S.A.?
Uh, no. It's, we, we, he really didn't give us time, he said about six months, four to six months before we see him. Ordering the lights and sirens and the computer, that's another issue too, so I'll probably have to order that before I can see the vehicles to make sure I get them, and around the same time the vehicle gets here. So I'm hoping to get a quote that I like for the updating pretty soon. Buddy Abern, it's, it's gonna be six months, eight months before, he's actually at the road.
Can you talk about the funding for the, for the DARE replacement? We got, what, 15,000 insurance money?
Yeah, to replace the JHONI insurance money, and the Eagles graciously donated 5,000 to replace the, the DARE vehicle also. I think that's a good experience.
20,000 to that sum, 15 from insurance, 5,000 from vehicles.
Yeah.
For the Eagles, well done.
Correct, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, they've been great over the years, and this is another time they stepped up and said they want to help out.
That's great.
So then, when, when those payments come in, the insurers, they, they go back into the police fund?
Yes, yes.
Alright, other questions? Uh, so, so we have this listed as an emergency, and I'm guessing that the reason to keep this as an emergency is because we need to order that, we need to get the, the process started. Do we have any concern with waiving the three and giving it an emergency language? So we will ask to waive the three on, on this one, now that it comes up. The next resolution we have. Just trying to see, I don't wanna step on this or whatever.
Oh, no, please.
Resolution 22 R22, a resolution creating a capital projects fund for New Franklin Parks and Recreation for the purpose of accumulating resources for consideration of tennis and pickleball courts at George Sisler Memorial Park, and declaring any emergency on this. So this is just, Susan, this is just a, an accounting thing to?
Yes.
Set up a proper accounts board?
Yes. As you discussed in previous meetings, I wanted to pay for it and have it be in advance, majority of it advanced from the general fund, and then the Parks and Recs will pay, that goes advanced over time. To be able to do that, we have to set up this specific capital projects fund to do that, so this is just a bookkeeping thing right now. You will get, next meeting, you will get two other resolutions that have to do with the same thing, which they're gonna approve the advance and how the advance is what we paid out the amounts, and also additional appropriations because we have to, with that, you know, give ourselves the authority to spend that money once we put it in.
Okay, perfect, questions, comments?
What's, what's the name of this fund gonna be? Do we know that?
Uh, it's the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund.
Okay. Okay, we're waiving the three on this? Alright, so we will ask to waive the three, at this time, we'd like to thank the chiefs for coming in, if there isn't anything else, I know you have important things to do at the moment, so, thank you. Alright, we'll, we'll ask to waive the three on this, we'll close the finance committee meeting at 6:27.
I think we're looking at community development at 6:27, all members present, two resolutions, Resolution 22 R20, a resolution approving revisions to the New Franklins, to New Franklin's agreement with Pogge Meyer Design Group to conduct a comprehensive planning update, a plan update in kind of an emergency.
Yeah, thank you.
I can explain this better.
We, as you know, that we selected Pogge Meyer, council approved that, had a base bid of 60,000 dollars, we had a few meetings with them, sent them, reviewed all of the component pieces of, of what the process would look like, and there was a determination that we wanted to, that, that we would be well-served to add, in this case, three additional steering committee meetings. We also had them come out, basically two more meetings with, with their consultants as well, so those additional, they presented a, a revised proposal to us to incorporate those additional meetings. And we did a little bit of arm wrestling with it, cut it down a little bit, to 67,640 dollars. That's still consistent with what the other bids were from the other consultants as well, I could, and Mr. Cox can do this, but, because he's involved in this whole process. And I did, inserting the language, authority for further increases not to exceed 10% without And I did, inserting the language, authority for further increases not to exceed ten percent without council's approval. And so as we go through this process, and as the steering committee gets laid, and they may decide, hey, we might have to do something actually. We want to do something for them. Maybe we want to do a, who knows? So that we don't have to necessarily come back and amend this every time if we're going to add a five-thousand, five-hundred-dollar, a thousand-dollar component. As long as it's within an additional sixty-seven hundred dollars, you would authorize us to do as part of the contract. If it exceeds that amount, that's an arbitrary number, but I think it's a reasonable number that I wouldn't expect anybody to go over there and know what they have. So that we wouldn't have to come back and ask council's approval at that point. So that's what we're presenting.
Are you going on, council, any questions on it? Yeah?
I'm Mark Sedlack, Grove, I for nine seven Grove. I understand what you just said, Mr. Mayor. My question is, is we, we thought I was selected as a member of the committee, and I've been notified that the first meeting's going to be like an hour and a half of the, of the committee. And then I see one, two, one, two, three, basically four meetings of the committee plus a signing party at the end. And I see the, that Pogomire having like sixteen hours in for the first meeting. Does that imply that this kickoff meeting's going to be an hour and a half, and then we're going to have like a week or every other week have additional meetings? Or is it you're going to meet with the steering committee for an hour and a half, and then Pogomire's going to go do something for sixteen hours?
They're going to do some things before they get that meeting. Those are the components, and it's really hard to read on this sheet. But analyze, review existing planning documents, compile analysis of relevant data, update of key issues and trends. And so they're going to, they're doing a lot of work before we get to that first meeting. So that's where those extra hours come in.
The next item, which is one point two, which is the kickoff meeting with the steering committee, which we have scheduled for an hour and a half, and if you follow that, I mean, they have sixteen hours in for that. And I'm just wondering if, it, it seems to me with twenty-seven people on a steering committee, and if we have an introduction that lasts ten, twelve, fifteen minutes, that less than three minutes per person to discuss something of this magnitude. So I'm, I'm thinking that there's going to be other meetings besides. Is that what that sixteen hours implies?
The ninety minutes was an arbitrary number that was suggested as an optimal time to hold the attention of a group for an extended period. That was as much consensus of this committee to talk. So we're, we're not locked into that. If it's three hours, it'll be three hours. And I think that the, the composition of the further meetings is going to, would be the consensus of the steering committee. So if it's going to be more than that, it may take longer if, you know, it's, so that's.
So, so that the hours that they have in there, that sixteen is like to accommodate that first meeting and then potential other meetings, and then their follow-up digesting what was discussed? And I'm just trying to get a, I need an idea of how this is made out because we're talking about a budget for their time, and I'm trying to get a feel for how the process is.
I don't entirely want to speak for them on that, Mr. Sedlack. And I'm assuming that there's behind-the-scenes work that they do other than the time that they're actually going to be spent with the steering committee before and after the meetings. So maybe that's something we can, we can take up when we.
We'll get a better idea of that after that first meeting, I guess.
That they will be at that first meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so obviously, we'll, we'll get to, we'll get to kind of hammer out what the, what their.
Well, I guess, I guess what my, my question is, is we're, we're talking about approving an amount of money for their services. If we find that there's not enough time allocated for sufficient discussion and all the people that are going to be on this committee to be, and we need to have subsequent meetings, how does that affect this budget? Or are we, we have some flexibility in how we're going to spend the money for Pogomire and/or process why we're going to add to this budget if needed for the project? That's my question. I'm questioning how, how process is going to go because we don't know yet, but.
You mentioned the ten percent over that we, we would have, we as the steering committee would have that ability to work with at a ten, ten percent rating. The other thing, we work with any lawyer, any, any, well, not just lawyer, accountant, anybody that charges by hour, we as the steering committee need to be cognizant of what we ask them to do. So, you know, as a group, especially when you get a group of people like, oh, yeah, let's figure this out, let's figure this out. And then all of a sudden, you just ask them to do twenty hours worth of work, and they're going to come back and say, okay, well, we need, we need more money.
Two thousand.
Yeah, I, 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 my impression from what was said was that this was, this additional resources was basically because of work that's been done so far or the number of meetings so far, kind of like, like that's what got us up to this.
Yeah, the original proposal had two steering committee meetings.
Okay.
And through the discussion was determined we're going to, you know, likely going to want more than that.
Right.
So that was the expansion to add some extra components. These are probably the original proposal was.
These are prob, again, not speaking for the mighty, but these are probably estimates based on what they've experienced.
Absolutely.
So we, we'll, we'll be cognizant of that in the meeting to make sure we're not set along on a lot of these.
Anyone? Okay, move on. Anything other problems to forward on tonight? Thank you. Here we go. Resolution twenty-two, oh, twenty-one, a resolution proposing a moratorium on issues for granting of applications or permits for public storage, mini storage, self-storage facilities in the city of New Franklin Ohio for a period of one year and declaring an emergency. This is due to the comprehensive plan in view, in view of that. Sure, there's probably two within that, but there may not be.
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's important. And, and we've, we've, there are no pending applications, but we've had some inquiries. And we took a hard look at the zoning code, which is somewhat adequate. We've talked about that before. A lot of it was just inherited from the township days. So we're aware that we need a revision, and, and the thinking was we wait until the comprehensive plan is concluded for a full revision. But just in looking at this issue relative to storage, it, it caused, it brings some questions for us in terms of some gaps in the, in the zoning resolution and some potential inconsistencies in the zoning resolution. And I won't go into detail on it, but we've got, we talked about public storage, mini storage, self-storage. There's, I, that's, there's, argued there should be some more definitions, and there should be some more consistency. So looking at the whole thing, we said, you know, we probably don't want to be at this point in, in the business of issuing permits for self-storage until we have a consistent code for, for applicants to comply with, and, and so that we got some consistency with what's going on in our community. And I do think it'll dovetail kind of nicely with what comes out of the comprehensive plan as well in terms of, you know, where they want, and where, where perhaps they would prefer not to see the self-storage. So the, the recommendation that we got from the zoning administrator and from legal counsel is the best thing we could do at this point was to put a moratorium. There are a number of communities that have similar moratoriums relative to this topic. And we would, it will be our intention, and I'll come to you with something soon, that to start the review at process of the zoning code on some areas, not necessarily wait until next year to start that. We'll probably look to engage a consultant to maybe begin to look at some of the nuts and bolts areas of our zoning resolution, to make it, it's updated, make sure it's consistent, et cetera. And this will be one of those areas. So, but in the meantime, we felt it best to, just to put a hold on things. Applications and the issuance of any permits while we have those discussions in the type of this zoning resolution. The process for that then will be, you know, the planning zoning is going to have to work with this commission, and the zoning administrator will have to work with this, and eventually when they come up and, you know, probably they'll piss off them as well. Although you don't have to reinvent the wheel on these, as you know. I think it's more a matter of let's get, you know, kind of update. I don't think we're going to be doing anything exotic. I think we're going to be more consistent with what you're going to see in some other zoning resolutions. And eventually, if the planning zoning believes that it's appropriate to make a change, they'll have to consider that first. There'll be public hearings. And then they'll make a recommendation to council, and then it will, it will reach council for any changes that we might. And so while we're going through that process, we're saying we'll set a moratorium and hold. So that's the purpose. It's been suggested that, you know, the sooner we put that in place, the better off we are.
Okay. Thank you.
With a short question. Sorry. But I want you to, you know, we haven't done this before, but I think it's, it's necessary stuff.
I appreciate it.
Does anyone on committee or council have any questions?
Just, just one question. You mentioned there's no pending applications. Are there any issued permits that's hanging out there right now? The reason I'm asking, you know, we, we pass this, and residency would pass this, and then they see one that's built somewhere.
Yeah. No, I, I believe that it's been approved for the property on the, that sits back at the corner of Miniger and Manchester. So that one was approved quite a while ago. And that's the only one that's, hasn't been, the permits were granted, but they haven't built that.
Did you feel this needs to be an emergency, this needs to be waived?
Well, that's the advice we got, yeah. And I think in fairness, that we, we're discussing it, we're putting it out there. You know, we don't necessarily want to have somebody running the door with one, and then, you know, I think we're better off without having any applications pending than we put it in place right now. And that was a recommendation of legal as well.
I agree with that. I'm comfortable with that.
Anyone have any questions? I'll be fast on you. All right, we'll move on of that tonight. That will. Community development. Sorry, I'm Terry Littlefield, six forty.
I'd like to.
What happened with you, Larry?
We got three hours to think this hard of it. It really is. I'd like to call to order the City of New Franklin regular council meetings for Wednesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at six forty. Everybody with Steve and Chris. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. This is a republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Charles.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to have an approval of the minutes on the regularly scheduled meeting in March sixteenth.
Second.
Kelly? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And now time for public comment. Does anyone have any questions or anything they'd like to discuss? Nothing?
Nope.
Sharon?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Sharon Diblin? I just want to say that I would be in favor of, of the storage facility. There is, I don't have proposed, approved, in the process or whatever. I don't really hear any issues. That can not be approved, but I think that would be a good thing. The other question that I have has to do with trash services. I have managed to find online that we have a schedule for the year for the trash services, but I still don't see any views. And we recently got a bill, and I'm a little bit confused about what it says. And I tried to talk to someone at the trash service. I'm not sure she knew what she was talking about, but one of the things that she said was that the county has something to do with the trash services. I, I think so. And the other thing that she said was that there is no senior program. What it is, is a backdoor program, and that's where they come up to the house and get your trash. And that's like double cost. But if you have medical disabilities or whatever, you can have medical approval from a doctor or whoever, then you get a discount. But there's no senior discounts.
There was confusion in the transition, and you weren't the only one who experienced that. We got a number of calls, and we talked to Republic, and the, the key man was, was away. And they had not entered into their system the components and the pricing of our contract with them. And so when people called and wanted to know about the senior rate, they didn't have any information on a senior rate. So we've corrected that now, and we'll go ahead and post those rates on, on the, on our website. But there is a senior rate. I don't have it in front of me. It's, the senior rate is for the, the limited service, which means whatever you put in your trash can, or whatever you put in your recycle bin. And so there's a reduced rate for seniors for that service. If you want the, I don't know what they call it, extended service.
Unlimited.
Yeah, remember, yeah, all the trash that you can throw out there. There is no senior rate on that. So on the unlimited, there's no senior rate, but on the limited, there's a senior rate. And then there is the, the, the.
Bag service.
Bag service, yeah. And I do believe that there is also the service added.
Back door.
The back door, but that's a separate component. But the senior rate does exist. And if anybody's having trouble with it, contact Republic now. They ought to be able to clarify it, or, or call us, and we'll get ahold of Republic, and we'll get it straightened out.
It's hard to get through.
All right, well, if you call us, we'll get through.
Sure. If you want the rates, I've got them right here.
And if she got a bill that was incorrect, they will adjust it.
Sure.
Is it the identity bill?
I just thought of something. The last meeting about, there was some information given out about that electrical, electric aggregation program. What was the deadline on that?
I don't remember. I think I may have a letter with me. I'm not sure, Mark.
Yeah, the morning that I asked, if we haven't received anything on.
You never received anything on?
Nope.
The deadline was March?
March twenty-eighth.
And we never got a letter of any kind of any sort.
The good news is you can still opt out of that, of that program without any penalty. So even if you missed that deadline, you can still opt out if you chose to.
So we can get the information to you?
Yeah.
And we get to hear it, you know?
We can forward it. We got, yeah.
It's possible they didn't send it to, to us because we haven't, that may already be part of it.
Angry duty.
Typically, as aggregation, you can't be on one of those plans when you're already playing from a third party. You have to work directly with Ohio letters and sell and pack your access, but maybe why we didn't get a letter?
And that was the case with the natural gas. When NOPEC was sending out letters, they were only sending out to eligible people that could switch or stay with NOPEC. So if you had a contract with a different supplier, you did not receive that letter from NOPEC. So it took the same situation to be.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Kelly, would you read the first Resolution twenty-two R eighteen?
The resolution accepting a proposal from BRICS Incorporated for the purchase of the BRICS fire station alerting system and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution twenty-two R eighteen as amended.
Shouldn't I have been amended?
Yeah.
Okay. I see what you're saying. So, so probably we will remove.
We move in there and an emergency?
Well, yeah.
All right.
It's getting there. Okay, so again, this is Resolution twenty-two R eighteen, a resolution accepting a proposal from BRICS Incorporated for the purchase of the BRICS fire station alerting system. So twenty-two R eighteen as amended, we move to waive the three readings on it.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yeah.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty-two R eighteen as amended.
Second?
Any discussion? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion, Captain, seven zero. Kelly, would you read Resolution twenty-two R nineteen?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase two police cruisers and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution twenty-two R nineteen.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Kelly, would you do a vote for?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R nineteen.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Kelly, would you do a vote call?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Kelly, would you read resolution twenty-two R twenty?
A resolution approving revisions to the New Franklin's agreement with Cogemeier Design Group to conduct a comprehensive plan update and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to the community, the vote, and we're moving to waive the three.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Would you do a vote call?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt twenty-two R twenty. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Kelly, would you do a vote call?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passed with seven zero. Kelly, would you read resolution twenty-two R twenty-one?
A resolo, resolution imposing a moratorium on issuance or granting of applications or permits for public storage, mini storage or self-storage facilities in the city of New Franklin, Ohio, for a period of one year and declaring an emergency.
This was, uh, assigned to community development and we're, I moved to waive the three.
Second.
We have a first and, we have a first and second. Kelly, would you do a?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt twenty-two R, I don't know. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Um, I, I would like to say, so a member of the community came in tonight and said that they were not in favor of these. I would encourage the public to come and share your thoughts. You know, as council, I, we, we, in my opinion, should work to not inhibit business, but if there's a type of business that the community feels passionate about, I would invite them to come and share their thoughts with us.
I agree. Kelly, would you do a vote call?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passed with seven zero. Kelly, would you read resolution twenty-two R twenty-two?
A resolution creating a capital projects fund for New Franklin's parks and recreation for the purpose of accumulating resources for the construction of tennis and pickleball courts at George Sisler Memorial Park and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-two R twenty-two. Second.
We have a first and a second. Kelly, would you do a?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-two R twenty-two.
Second. Kelly, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Would you do a vote call?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yeah.
And now our favorite time, the neighbors report.
Hey, you're so kind. All right, uh, first of all, we want to thank the Eagles, of course, uh, because, uh, and I let the chief get out of here early, Chief Leslie, I'm sure he will enjoy announcing this, but in addition to the five thousand dollars that they donated for the, uh, the dare cruiser, which is, that's going to be the primary purpose of that vehicle and boy, we're going to be glad to have that back in commission. Uh, it sends such a powerful message. Uh, the Eagles also awarded, uh, in response to a grant request from the, uh, from the fire department, five thousand dollars for what they refer to as water containment trailer. Uh, and this is, uh, these funds will, will be used to purchase a six by twelve trailer to house and transport the department's spill containment supplies. Uh, the spill containment trailer would contain the department's stockpile of materials necessary to absorb oils, fuels, other petroleum-based products, in addition to coolants and other spill materials that are deep casters. Uh, so they had a need for that trailer and they reached out to the Eagles and the Eagles handed five thousand dollars. We reached out to the Eagles and said, would somebody, would somebody please come so we could thank you? And they, they just, I guess, prefer to remain, that kind of anonymous donors and as you well know, they've done an awful lot for the community and they continue to do that, so we're, we're very, very appreciative and we'll, uh, the, the fire department will extend that appreciation as well, memorialize that, that's communicated on behalf of the administration and also on behalf of council. All right, let's see. The five-year plans have been submitted and we're collating them right now and on a, uh, index form that will, and I'm meeting with the department heads to do a more tweak on them next week. We'll have them out to council. Uh, I know they're going to be very helpful. Uh, we've had them in the past and we're really trying to put them in an expanded form and, and I think that, uh, at, you know, at a minimum, they'll answer those questions for you, you know, if you need a new cruiser, is that in the plan? You're going to have the plan in front of you. Uh, so, uh, we'll be getting that out to you, we ought to be, have it out, uh, probably week after next. The comprehensive plan is moving forward. As you know, steering committee has been formed. First meeting is Tuesday, April forty-sixth at six thirty. Uh, our friends over at United Methodist Church have agreed to host us. Uh, Pastor Craig Hannibal, uh, and, uh, and his staff. Uh, it was, the trick was to try to find a room that was big enough to accommodate everybody and we probably could put them in here, but it's open to the public and so it's neutral venue. Uh, and we'll start over there and, and going forward where the subsequent meetings will be, that'll pretty much be the business of the steering committee, working with, uh, in conjunction with the, uh, consultants. But that will be six thirty, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. And it's, um, it's open to the public and the level of participation, it will be determined by the steering committee themselves. So, uh, whether, well, whatever they decide, whatever's most efficient. Okay, so that's it, that's moving forward. Uh, April sixteenth is a busy day, I don't know if you were going to talk about some of those, or, oh, no, I stepped on you last time. Uh, April sixteenth, that's the week from Saturday, is, uh, cleanup day out at Porterslake State Park. Uh, and so the Porterslake Advisory Council, I believe, coordinates that event. Visit their website, you'll get information. Uh, they always do a cleaning up job and, uh, and pick up an awful lot of trash, uh, out there. Uh, at that same time, uh, the Easter egg hunt will be taking place and that's going to be at the state park because the grounds right now are in transition or Tudor House. Uh, so the parking lot will be at the state park and they'll direct you from there. Uh, and, uh, I think they start at ten thirty and the hunt starts at noon and don't get in those kids' way. That's all I can do. Uh, you know, that's another nice thing, uh, you know, I, I, last year, you know, crazy COVID. It's been a while since they were able to do that. I know last year was a drive-through and, you know, the kids came and they got handed something, but, uh, so we're trying to do our best as a community to get back to normal. Also on that day is the first yard waste drop-off from nine AM to three PM. That's out at the, uh, Service Department grounds over in Hampshire. Uh, that's posted on our website as well. So if you, uh, uh, I was going to say it's going to be a nice weekend if you like snow, I guess, but if you're, if you're starting with your yard cleanup and you bag that stuff up and all gets recycled properly, um, the, the, the men will be there to accept those drop-offs, nine AM to three PM on, uh, Saturday. Uh, the following Saturday is shredding day and, uh, that takes place right out here and I forgot how the hours stand on that. Do you remember?
I think it's, mm, ten, ten? No, I think it's
Ten to one.
Is it?
Ten to one?
Yeah.
All right, okay. And you have to have proof of residency, every driver's license with you and, uh, um, again, we won't have to be quite as hands-off as we were a year ago with COVID, but, uh, there'll be people there to help unload and, um, so that's always a very popular event. Kiwanis Spring Shoe Drive. Uh, we'll have something on our website about this tomorrow. It's a really neat thing that they're doing and I just wanted the public to be aware. Um, they are collecting new and gently-used shoes and then they'll distribute these shoes. And I, I know other branches of Kiwanis have done this before. I remember Barter did it a couple of years ago and just had an enormous number of shoes that, that, uh, you know, that pair that you bought and they don't quite fit or you wore them a few times or, uh, or, you know, whatever. Uh, they have a drop-off at the Kiwanis, um, Community Center over on Porterslake Drive this Saturday from one PM to four PM. And then they'll be there two weeks later, uh, on the twenty-third from one to four PM. Or we have some local businesses that were kind enough to agree to be volunteer drop-offs class. And one of those is here at New Franklin, is a PLX Deli of Dogs. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, so they'll, they'll take those as well and, uh, yeah, good time to clean out the closet, get rid of those shoes that, I don't know why they want those, uh, but again. Okay, and I have two more things, Sail in the Summer. Uh, that's the Sunday, Memorial Day weekend is, is our weekend event and Sunday, we were out at the Tudor House and we had an awful lot of people. Uh, we, well, it's called Sail in the Summer. We invite vendors to come out with, with booths. So if you, uh, if you are interested as a vendor and would like some, to have a booth out there, please call us, More the Merrier. Um, that's, uh, we're, we're really looking forward to that and then, of course, the next day will be the parade. And, uh, that took me back also to, what was, I know, was it, I guess, two years? I think we did the real parade last year. Yeah, we did, sure we did, at the gala. But the year before that, it was virtual, right? Wow. That's all, uh, it's so, it's like it didn't happen in, in, it's like it took ten years, I don't know. But if you have a parade unit, please let us know. There's no politics, but, uh, if you know somebody or there's a marching unit or a group, you know, again, that's a More the Merrier, uh, in that parade. So let us know if you have a group, baseball and softball and the soccer and all those folks, get your teams together, throw them in the back of the truck and, uh, create tradition out here. And, uh, that's all I have.
Susan, do you have any good comments?
Um, just kind of an update, I, I know we spoke about it the last meeting about, um, the software solutions analytics program we did, the mayor and I were on to, uh, last week and they showed us the functionality of it and they are to get back with us this week on, on the exact pricing and, um, and give us a proposal and we're supposed to update, uh, update on that by Friday, so I just kind of wanted to keep you guys in the loop. Um, it does a lot of things, which we knew that already and, and a lot of things with budgeting, a lot of things with reports that we can create. It's, it's a program that's outside of VIP, which is our, our finance program, but it is connected, it pulls, it automatically pulls the information from our, our financial reports. So, um, we will let you know what we find out price-wise and, um, then it'll be time to figure out if the cost is worth the, or, uh, the way, or the, the use of it, basically. I mean, it's, it's a nice program and down, I can see down the, um, down the road, it can be more advantageous, but whether you want to think that that cost is worth it, that'll be another, another thing to discuss at that time.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing, giving an understanding or some, uh, synopsis of.
I could send you, I think they have, they have that, um, video on their website.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, I would send that to you.
I would look at that too, Susan, because it sounds very good.
I could send it to all of you guys.
I think particularly after what Chief Leslie was saying, how much better this program is going to be. It is more expensive, but it is so much better for the client. If you have that person ill at the other end, that's really what we want. Susan, do you think so far looking at it, that it gets something yet? You would like?
Um, I don't, I think, yeah, I think it'll be helpful, I do. Um, there'll be the, the, uh, learning curve for, for all of us because it's going to be basically available to the department heads to look at things in real time. Um, I think down the road, like I said, I think it'll be very valuable, but it, but it's just what the trade-off is, money versus, and, and that to me is something that, especially since we don't have a bottom line yet, that, that's the difference.
Thank you, Susan. Paul, I look back at some of these things you mentioned. That looks like a busy summer.